All right, you ready though?
Sure. You?
You let us know?
All right, let's do it.
You've got the gall girl.
A call to order the December 19th, 2022.
Microphone.
Keep your mics on.
I'm going to call to order the December 19th, 2022 Royal Oak City Commission meeting. We're going to begin with an invocation given by Commissioner Dubac, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand up for your account.
Well, tonight we gather in the midst of the holiday season, celebrated by many as the season of giving and a time to make an extra effort to be truly kind to our neighbors. And in that spirit of kindness, I will keep this very brief. To everyone in Royal Oak and beyond, from every cultural background and religious tradition, and especially to those who have been struggling during what's been a challenging few years, I wish you and yours peace and joy this holiday season and a very happy new year.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you Commissioner Dubac. All right, moving on to the approval of the agenda. Yes, Commissioner Douglas?
Yes, Mayor Protem. I'd like to modify the agenda and add an item, making item seven a public hearing, the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, and adding item eight, approval of or adoption of the Parks and Rec Master Plan.
Okay, you got a motion by Commissioner Douglas? Second by Commissioner Perush. Any discussion on the agenda? All who's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, passes. All right, now we move on to public comment. I guess I have to give this whole thing for our two public commenters. Oh, and I should have said in advance that Mayor Fournier, illness has struck his family like so many that is happening right now, so he's not able to be here tonight. So we'll have to carry on this last meeting of 2022 without him, but we hope his family gets better fast.
And we're missing somebody else.
And Commissioner Colo out for the same reason.
I didn't even know that.
Yeah.
And Commissioner Colo, same reason, and we're hoping the best for his family as well. All right, the City Commission values and relies on the input of our fellow citizens to make decisions. Now is the time set aside for the public to address the City Commission on any city-related issues, both on the agenda and not. Please direct your comments to the City Commission as a whole and not individual commissioners. In addition to public comment, there will be one public hearing at tonight's meeting, adoption of the 2320 to 27 Parks and Recreation Master Plan. If you hear to comment on the 2327 adoption of the Parks and Rec Master Plan, you may wait until the public hearing is open and comment at that time. You can do both. If you wish to speak tonight at either public comment or at the public hearing, please wait until recognized by me and then come to the podium. For the record, please state your name and address. Be mindful that we want to hear from everyone who wishes to speak, so the comments are limited to three minutes or less per speaker, not per topic. There is a timer at the podium to help you keep track. If you don't wish to speak tonight, please don't hesitate at any time to email or call the City Commission. Please note that we will respond directly to your questions during public comment. However, we're taking notes and will address the questions when the agenda topic is discussed or refer to the proper city department. City manager is also taking notes and will look into matters as needed. Okay. So I see people who look like they're here to talk about the Parks and Rec Master Plan. The question is, do they want to squeeze six minutes in and get three now and three later?
We'll defer.
All right, public comment, go in once, go in twice. It's closed, back up here. All right, now we have the consent agenda. Is anyone hoping to take anything off the consent agenda tonight? Okay. Can I read it first?
Yes.
All right, so the consent agenda will consist of claims December 16th and December 16th special pay, approval of purchase orders, acceptance of retirement system, pension and retiree healthcare plan, actuarial evaluation reports from June 30th, approval of university office technologies print management agreement, approval of the 2223 Royal Youth Assistance Service Agreement, confirmation of city manager reappointment, rehab loan review committee, confirmation of city manager appointments downtown development authority, and receive and file the government accounting standards board statements number 67 and 68, accounting and financial reports for pensions, June 30th, government accounting standards board statements number 74 and 75, accounting and financial reporting for post-employment benefits other than pensions. Is that so good? Anybody have a motion?
We will.
Motion by Commissioner Douglas, second by Commissioner Dubac. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Do you want to say anything about the DDA?
Oh, I can bring that up. So, thank you, Madam Mayor Protem, and the members of the City Commission. So if you remember at last week's meeting, we had the appointments, we took care of two out of three, was able to find a resident of the DDA that I'm presenting to you this evening, and as well as two other appointments that will help lend representation of retail as well as office in the DDA district. So, and I've spoken to and interviewed each of these candidates and moving these forward for your consideration.
Okay, and your DDA Board is expanding.
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right, so any more discussion? Call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, consent agenda passes. All right, moving on to item seven, which is now just the public hearing for the 2327 Parks and Rec Master Plan. So do I discuss first and then we open it? So I'm going to open up the public hearing? And so now I call for my public commenters? All right, you're up, guys. Who's going first? Let's choose one.
Good evening, I'm Rebecca Chezum, I live at 606 West Lincoln Avenue. I'm just here to offer support for the proposed plan from the Parks and Rec and Senior Services Committee. I've had the opportunity to serve on the committee for the last year, and one thing that I was really impressed with this process was the community engagement, and I got to be able to be part of that, going to a couple events at parks and talking to a lot of people who were, you know, visiting the park. And there were a lot of really positive comments about the parks, and I thought it was also interesting, they weren't all residents of Royal Oak, a lot of people coming from neighboring towns to enjoy our parks. And I'm excited about, you know, we have this great foundation to build upon with what we have in this plan, and I think that you'll see that it's robust, it's, you know, based on a lot of engagement from the community, well laid out. I like how it's, you know, even park by park, there's a really great description of each park. So just wanted to offer my support for the plan this evening, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chezum. Mr. Vukic?
Good evening, Board. My name is Joe Vukic. I live at 1013 North Pleasant Street in Royal Oak. Been a resident for 10 years. I've served on this board for two years, and I was just appointed to the Board of Directors for Royal Oak Football Club, so I enjoy serving and giving back to the community. It was an honor to work with this group and on this plan. I know, along with Rebecca, we feel a lot of work and thought was put into it to help make our parks more sustainable, equitable, and accessible for all residents. We know our 51 parks are a gem for all of our citizens as a parent. This is something that I value, that my kids and the kids in our communities and in our neighborhoods can enjoy, and we think this plan will just move that forward and make our parks and the infrastructure of our parks even better for generations of kids and families to enjoy moving forward. So it was a pleasure to work with the McKenna crew, it was really fun to be out and to do the engagements with the community. That was really eye-opening, getting all the positive feedback from the community and hearing kind of like the community wish list. So it was a really, really fun to be part of the process and just here again to lend my support for the master plan. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vukic. Thank you both for your service on this board. All right, Mr. Pedele?
Good evening, Mayor Protem and the members of the City Commission. Our current Parks and Rec Master Plan is set to expire this December, which was last adopted in 2016. So we hired McKenna, who is here today, who will go over kind of a brief synopsis of the master plan presented tonight, that would go from the 2023 to 2027 term. This would also help us go after some grants with the Michigan DNR, some other local, state, and federal grants as well. This master plan will serve as a roadmap for the department to go ahead and improve the parks from all the feedback. And as other members have mentioned, we had extensive feedback, where we had engagement at our art fair, Juneteenth event, arts beats and eats, a field day, a couple field days at Normandy Oaks. So we feel as if there's a lot of good, positive, and constructive feedback that the department can take forward and just build upon the success of the department and the great parks that we have. So after that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Paul and Laura, who are with the consulting groups from McKenna, and they'll just go over a brief synopsis of the plan and we'll take any questions or comments.
All right, thank you for that excellent public comment, and now we'll close the public hearing and move over to McKenna and let him continue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening. The plan that you have in front of you is a, as I already mentioned a little bit, it's intended to be a roadmap for decisions about park recreation development and funding for the next five years and beyond. There's several reasons why communities do these plans. The chief one, or often the driving one to keep them on schedule, is that it makes a community eligible for grants from the Michigan Department of Natural Resources. But it's also an opportunity to communicate a community's values about parks, and in this case, we really thought it was an opportunity to create an authentically community-supported vision about Royal Oak's parks and recreation opportunities. This plan is not an obligation, a means to obligate funding, it's not part of the formal capital improvement plan. It's intended to be aspirational and inclusive, so that when an opportunity to implement something comes up, that thought has already been vetted and can be implemented.
And as part of the process, as was just mentioned, in addition to the robust in-person engagement, there is also the online virtual component that started earlier this summer and has continued throughout this planning process. In the plan, it notes some of the summarization of those comments, so there was over 400 responses to the survey, almost 800 online comments about specific park-related improvements or opportunities. There were over 3,000 up or down votes related to those comments. And the appendix that is available online also contains the detail of all, the breakdown of all of those comments. So that's available for viewing as well, and that's included in the appendix and will be part of the final adoption document. That document alone is almost as long as the plan itself, at 120-some pages. But all of these comments, both in person and virtual, allowed us to really drill down to the specific aspirations for each of the parks. We did receive comments on each of the city's 51 parks, which was extremely helpful, so we used that information and compared that with a more technical analysis of benchmarks that are laid out by the National Recreation and Parks Association, demographic mapping and study, and land use mapping. And those really helped to formulate the goals and objectives and the strategic action plans in this document.
So there were a few imperatives that we heard from the staff when we started this process, and they were sort of borne out by our initial research. And I just wanted to quickly mention, it's in the executive summary of the plan that the guiding, there's four guiding principles that sort of shaped how we inventoried the parks, it shaped our analysis and organized the recommendations as well. The first is sustainability, given the city's work on the S-CAP and the significant conversation that's already happening in that realm. Accessibility, similarly, the, we, you know, we understood the context that this plan is being done in, and it's building on a lot of work about issues that are important to the community. The Aging in Place Plan, for example, in addition to the S-CAP. Fiscal responsibility was one, just trying to be realistic about, although we are trying to be aspirational, we're also trying to not be fanciful, I guess, with the recommendations. And as we've said a few times, thorough engagement and a significant engagement process.
And then, two of the most important components of the plan that the DNR will be looking at are your goals and objectives and the strategic action plans. And so the goals and objectives, some have carried over from the previous plan and been built upon, and there's really three main categories. There's parks and facilities, programming, and then administration and organization. And when you look at the strategic action plan section, there's really two different action plans. The first is more system-wide, and that speaks to some of the long-term projects that would apply to multiple parks and facilities. And you'll notice that the goals are associated with those projects, and that is something in particular that the DNR needs to see, that your goals and objectives are actually supporting the projects that you intend to go after in the next five, 10 years. And then the second action plan in the document is your park-specific action plan. So all the parks are listed alphabetically, and within that action plan are short, near, mid, and long-term projects and improvements for each facility. And those, as Paul mentioned, they're not tied to that timeframe if funding or opportunities present otherwise, but it does lay a roadmap for the next five years as required by the state, but also longer-term, 10-plus years.
So the engagement we've already spoken about happened ahead of the draft publication. There's a couple more steps that the plan has to go through before it gets too completely adopted. The final step is the public hearing that we just had, but prior to that, the plan was out for more than 30 days of public comment. We put the first batch of those comments in your packet. The 30-day period expired two days after your packet deadline, so there was another chunk that is in front of you right now. We added, there's, in those three days, we got a nice round 100 comments about the draft, a lot of thoughtful feedback, a couple clarifying things that I think did warrant revisions. We tracked those in the sheet that we distributed to you as proposed revisions, if you agree, to address those comments or to sort of clarify things that became apparent were not clear when the public read them. So that last batch is in front of you now, and we're happy to clarify them, clarify any questions about those. But if you have any additional comments, or if you agree with those, our thought is that the draft that we sent to you has been implemented reflecting the 30-day period comments.
And so this evening, what we are asking the City Commission to consider moving forward is adoption of the plan by resolution, which we've provided a sample in your packets. This is a requirement by the state to do it by resolution. If there's any changes that you would like to see acknowledged in the plan, this could be made with your motion this evening. And then the next steps for us and city staff would be to file the plan with the state by February 1st, and this will ensure that you maintain your grant eligibility for the next five years. Paul and I are both happy to answer any questions this evening. It was a pleasure working with Royal Oak and your citizens on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions with this team? Commissioner Dubac?
So first of all, thank you for such a thorough work product. Thanks to everyone that participated in the process and all the public that gave input. This is really, really helpful to see all this information about our parks in one succinct package. The one question that jumps out at me, you know, there's a lot of references to our funding sources here. We just got the millage passed five weeks ago, and it doesn't make reference to that. I'm just wondering, given the certainty now of that revenue, has that impacted the substance of the recommendations or timing in any formal way? And this report is basically as it sat before that happened, and now we just know we have a little bit more reliable funding coming.
Well, he's moving the microphone. I would say the latter. So this doesn't necessarily determine priorities, that's through the committee and staff recommendations that'll be brought forward. Certainly, we would like to do as many things as possible, but five years is a short period amount of time. So as I mentioned before, right after the approval of the millage, we want to look for impactful projects. So instead of, and not to diminish this, but by doing small things all over the place isn't as important, where we can leverage dollars hopefully from Lansing or other grant sources, that we can multiply this, you know, this two and a half million that we'd be collecting approximately over the next five years into 10 to 20 million, let's hope. So I don't think that the plan was intended to identify priorities, but I think staff knows that based on the ones that are probably that have the most dire need, if you will, that are in disrepair or pose a safety risk as well. Additionally, not to add another element, but is, so early next year, we'll talk about the ARPA funding, and that we can combine if we do pursue, for instance, green infrastructure. So here's another layer that we can add in, where we can make improvements to the parks as well. So that's, there's a lot to sort through here, but I think, you know, with recommendations that'll be coming from staff, we're identifying these priority areas that impactful as well as where there is a need from a stormwater management perspective, or whatever that we identify. So I just wanted to make that beginning caveat, but perhaps lend to the Director Flipsky if there's anything else that he would like to add based on those comments.
Yeah, I think you covered that pretty well. The plan doesn't really talk about timing so much as it does lay out just the sort of condition and where we should start. So to the extent that the millage provides us the ability, as Mr. Brake had said, to expedite these improvements, we certainly will.
Okay, so this will inform on our budget-making process and our budget decisions.
Correct.
But we, I would assume, are going to expect to see in the recommended budget some aggressive action on some of these parks, like Dickinson, that are in desperate need of attention.
Yes. Cool. Absolutely. And if there's small maintenance things that we can do from that perspective, you know, that it doesn't have to be tied to a large construction project, you know, let's be creative about that.
Okay. All right. I think my only other comment is, I really appreciate, going through all the public comments, I saw a common theme of like, tennis courts aren't used, turn them all into pickleball courts. But like, the eight usable tennis courts in our city on a nice day are all used, you just can't play, you know, on most of them. So I really appreciate the approach, that there are some recommendations for new pickleball courts, because ours is certainly busy, but also upgrading a good number of our tennis courts, so would love to see some action on that this year. Thank you.
Strong second on that, Commissioner Dubac. I also, when this came forward, I was like, you're deconditioning seven tennis courts? Or maybe even said nine at the time. And I just wanted to quickly say, just add my piece to that, is that my feeling about how the millage impacts this is that this was an aspirational plan, so we never thought that, you know, the one to three-year things, that we'd actually be able to afford to do all those things in one to three years. So now more things are possible than were before, which is pretty exciting.
Yes.
But yeah, I don't think it, don't think it changes anything except gives us more to do. I'm sorry, Mr. Douglas?
Well, speaking as one who played pickleball just this morning, I say, hooray! Yeah, just a couple comments. In looking at the analysis of all of the parks, I was actually somewhat gratified at the condition that they're in, that many of them are in. I mean, you can see the ones that need work, Dickinson, Elks Park, we've just recently addressed, but, I mean, across the board, there were some parks that were in decent condition, and I'm happy to see that. I do, and I said at our last meeting when we approved the Aging in Place Plan, that a challenge for staff is going to be creating a matrix of objectives or tasks that align with more than one plan. For example, and Ms. Chezum knows this, of course, that the folks who participated in the senior task force were very keen on walking trails, accessibility, and places to sit. So I hope to see those stars align. I do have a question about the five-year plan. I mean, because five years ago, we did a plan, and now this year, we've spent a pot of money on professional consultants to do a five-year plan. Now, the state's rules about master plans are just that you have to approve a master plan every five years. So I'm hoping that in five years, we don't have to go through this entire process again, but can look at it and tweak it, because so much of the work here is work that is not going to be completed in five years. So just trusting that that will be the case. The end.
That's my understanding as well. Commissioner Hunt?
Well, I echo what Commissioner Douglas and Commissioner Dubac already said, this is a great plan. Thank you so much for the time and effort in putting this together and working with our community for their recommendations and suggestions. I did have a question about the accessibility. There was a score of one to five of whether or not it's actually accessible or not. And there were some that had low accessibility, there were recommendations to make it more ADA compliant, but then there were some like Mark Twain Park, or Dog Park, and Pioneer that didn't have any recommendations specifically to make it ADA compliant, such as no parking spaces at Mark Twain Park. Was there any reason why all of them were not necessarily looked at to make them more ADA compliant or accessible?
I think the, in the plan it states that the general aspiration is to make everything completely ADA accessible. The recommendations are an overlap between the accessibility score, the facility condition, and the public input. And I think we sort of use the public input as the driver unless something was in such dire shape that it absolutely had to be addressed sooner than later. But I think fundamentally, in the ideal world, you would apply, you would make every piece of equipment in every park ADA accessible. So starting with that, and then taking all the input we received, we tried to identify the points of most overlap and what we perceived as to be most important to the community.
So the goal necessarily wasn't to give recommendations on specifically how to make it ADA compliant, but with the overarching goal of each park should be ADA compliant?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thanks. And as you were going through these, was there any opportunity that you had to look at what costs may be for your recommendations?
At a high level, yes, given the number of parks and the amount of equipment in the city. And I guess that's the reason that they're not presented as, with an opinion of cost for anything.
Okay. Okay, I understand. It could be a daunting process in putting those together, I was just curious to know whether or not that was looked at. Thank you.
First of all, thank you so much for this body of work. I mean, this is incredible. I've known about McKenna for years, and we know you do excellent work, and this is your latest example of an extraordinary project, as well as staff input and all of the community members, too. We really appreciate that. It's so large, and there's so much information, it's kind of hard to get a grasp of it all at once. This is something that we're going to keep going back to again and again and again to get more information, to flesh out what we want to do at any point in time. I just have a couple of things I want to note. First of all, during the first year of COVID, I did a lot of helping with our son-in-law and daughter because they work at home, and they had a child during the summer who couldn't go to things because of COVID, so she came to Grandma's house a lot. And we visited, I think, over the summer, probably 16 different parks in Royal Oak. We kind of mapped them out and decided which ones we wanted to go to, and then, of course, we had to go back to some that were her favorites. But that gave me a really good sense of the variety of parks that we have in this community. And I guess that was my first question, is it seems like an extraordinary variety of parks in one small community, relatively speaking. Is this unusual? Are we, when we hear 50 parks in the city, people think, oh, that's really unusual, and to us it is. Is it really unusual to have that many?
Yes, this is, Royal Oak is a very special community in that the way that it was a Yes, this is, Royal Oak is a very special community in that the way that it was originally built up with its grid streets and the central walkable parks for the neighborhoods, you don't see that in many communities, and that's truly a gem here that you have, that park space is accessible to most of your households within that, you know, five, 10-minute walk zone. I think in the, you know, the hundreds of park plans that we've done at McKenna over the years across Michigan and the Midwest, Royal Oak has the most amount of parks that we have, that we have ever inventoried and done. I think the city of Kalamazoo was maybe at 50 or 49. So you truly have something unique here.
Okay, thanks. Secondly, one of the consistent issues that arose both in public comments as well as some of the other stuff that we've seen are concerns with drainage in a lot of the parks. We know that because of the soil makeover in a lot of areas in Royal Oak, it's just not conducive to good drainage, and the way the parks were developed in terms of location and so on, that adds to the drainage issues. Is that also a relatively unique issue among park systems that you've surveyed? I mean, obviously, they're all going to have their natural characteristics, but the drainage issue seems to be a persistent problem here that I don't hear about in other communities. Are we unique, unique that way in some ways?
I think, maybe, I think it's a consequence, too, of the amount of parks. If there is a lower provision of parks per capita or per land area, there's an opportunity to not take all the pieces of land that are necessarily going to have topographical issues. But I think the, so perhaps, yes, Royal Oak's unique in that way, in that way, too. But I think also, a lot of places that become parks are places that are not developable or that, you know, they're adjacent to natural resources and things like that. So that's a common occurrence, but it does seem to be prevalent here.
Yeah. Well, just from those of us who frequent the parks all the time, I mean, we know the ones that have the most significant issues, and then, you know, we find others as well. But our soil conditions sometimes don't help us in that regard. The last comment I have is, I thought that we had read all of the comments when we had gone through, you know, number 49, and now we have like 100 and some in front of us again. Is there, again, is that, is the number of comments and the amount of public participation that you encountered typical for a park plan like this? I mean, I was overwhelmed with the number of people that would just show up at a public event and put stickers on a board. Was that atypical, or was that something that you pretty much had anticipated?
I don't know if we anticipated this many. I think it's atypical, but not unique, I guess. Sometimes we publish them and are lucky if one or two comments come through. One of the first things that Judy David said to us was that Royal Oakers like to take surveys. And so, you know, the response has been great. I think it's good because I think we can truly say, collectively say, that this is something that has the, that reflects the voice of people that want to be heard. But it's a, it's a large number of parks, it's an unusual number of comments as well, yes.
Okay.
A significant, a significant number of the comments that you did not see sort of came in at the last minute, and I would say upwards of 80% of them are some version of we would like more pickleball, or we endorse the, it was supposed to be pickleball. It's sort of self-identifying, you know, from the pickleball community, we read this and we would like to endorse this particular recommendation.
The pickleball lobby is very strong, very strong lobby, yes, for sure. All right, thank you.
So I wanted to add to my Commissioner Purush's question about the number of parks, and I, there was a chart, but I guess it did make into the final plan of, you know, the standard number of parks per city of this size, like how many you would expect to have in a city of this size, how many basketball courts, and we were way over for everything except pool. But isn't that, is that right? Is that a good characterization of there's the grid of amenities that a city could, our size should have? We're way over.
Yes, there's a facilities analysis, outdoor and indoor, that's included in the plan. I think it's in Chapter 5, perhaps. And that details for a city of Royal Oak's population against national benchmarks of similarly sized communities, and you far exceed in almost every category the amount of basketball courts and tennis courts and the playground structures, soccer fields, et cetera.
Okay, thank you. Just so, to your point, like that, it does, it does seem that we are very unique in the fact that we have such a robust park system, which is why it's hard to keep up with the maintenance of all the little pieces of it, because there's so much going on. And I think it's amazing that we offer so many unique parks, and that's something that I've really been interested in in my time on the Parks and Rec Board, is trying to make sure that these parks don't, aren't all carbon copies of each other, but there's a unique reason to go to these different parks, and that our city really invites people to do all their kinds of recreation in our, in our public spaces. And so I'm thrilled with the parks that we have, and I think that this plan is such an excellent reflection of what we have already and then where we can be looking to the future. I mean, I think it's been said by everyone up here, but this is really, really beautifully done, and we're so pleased that we had you onboard to do this. You worked so well with our staff, you worked so well with the community engagement. It was quite an impressive work, and I think this is going to be a really good guide for us as we go forward and the things we want to do with our parks. And I would love to spend all of our budget on parks and get all this done at once, but the fact that you've laid it down, and, you know, I expressed some reservations at some of the board meetings, that there was, it was going to be too, not aspirational, I guess is the word, that there would be, that we would hold back and say, oh, well, we'll just fix some park benches, and then that will be good for the next five years. But you really did comprehensively take from the community the input and very thoughtfully think, you know, where could, decide where things could happen in terms of time and what our needs are from the staff. It was, it's just really well done. So anyone who's watching this, if you haven't looked at this plan, you should really take a look at it. So that's all that I have to say about that. Does anyone else, Commissioner Dubach?
I think that's incredibly well said, and I will move to support the resolutions as presented.
Actually, this is just the public hearing.
I thought we closed the hearing.
We did close the hearing.
Yeah, we did.
Oh, we did, okay. But I didn't officially move, but I should have.
Right.
Yeah.
I moved.
No, no, I didn't, yeah. Motion by Commissioner Dubach? Second by Commissioner Hunt? And then I didn't move to the next item. Like I didn't say it aloud. I said it in my head, though.
I think we all picked up on that. Context cues.
All right, so now we've thoroughly discussed it. Does anyone have any final words? All right, call for the vote. Halls in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, it passes. We have a plan. We can get some more of those, those grant dollars. We'll be looking for that in the next year. All right, notwithstanding the betterment, yes, Commissioner Douglas?
Mayor Potem, the people's business being concluded for the evening and the year, I move we adjourn.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Douglas? Second by Commissioner Purush? Any discussion on the final adjournment of 2022? All right, call for the vote. Halls in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. We are adjourned for the year.
All done, everyone.